Welcome, it's August 26, 2020. This is our school committee meeting. And we are being recorded by WACA Cable TV. And I'll start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, we're utilizing the Zoom conferencing platform to conduct our meeting and all board committee members are participating remotely, as are all of our guests this evening. The goal is to maintain the spirit of the open meeting law, providing access and transparency to all proceedings. When appropriate, efforts will be made to allow for public participation through the Zoom platform, and we will have some time tonight, as in all of our meetings, for public comment, and that will happen at the beginning of our meeting, and I'll let you know when the time for public comment is. Your patience with any technical difficulties is appreciated as we conduct meetings in this new way. So our order of business this evening, we had an executive session on the schedule, but that is no longer necessary. So we will start with our opening procedures, agenda, review and adoption. We're going to have some time for public comment. Our items of interest to the public or administrative items include this evening, our COVID-19 approval items of the reopening plan, phases of learning, presentation by Sergeant Ed Berman, heat days, remote participation in athletics, policies. I'm not sure that we're going to be addressing all these policies this evening, is that correct, Mr. Kendall? Is it just the mask policy this evening?
That's the only one for the first read. I'll kind of give a brief update on the others.
Okay. So EDCFA for first reading on the mask policy, and then a brief updates on EBC emergency plans, and ACAB sexual harassment. We'll have warrant approvals by Mrs. Bates. Our consent actions include our approval of minutes, July 29, 2020, and August 12, 2020, acceptance of gifts and donations, committee reports of activities, member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn. So while I take the roll call, I'll also ask if everybody is okay with the order of business this evening, and I'll start with you, Mr. Terry.
Present, and yes, I'm okay with the order of business, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy Bates. You're muted, Kathy. You can give me a thumbs up. Paul Kendall? Aaron Williams?
Aaron, good with it?
Excellent, thank you. Okay, thank you, Kathy. We are going to start with our opportunity for public comment. So if anybody is here who would like to give comment, this is the time to do so. And I know, Michelle, you have a few words tonight. I see Mr. DeSoney's hand up. Is there anybody else? I'm just trying to think about the order of things here. Mark, would you like to go first? Is that okay with you, Michelle?
Okay.
It's fine.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
I know that the school is scheduled to open up soon, within a week and a half, two weeks, or when?
14th.
September 14th.
Okay. Reason why I'm bringing that up because an hour ago, I got a robo-call from Mr. Berman about the water ban. I'm going to ask, how's that going to affect the school itself and the water usages?
It shouldn't mark at all.
Now, Mr. Ed Berman, your voice sounds so distinguished on those robo-calls. And I'm just wondering, is drinking water and the usage and all that stuff, I'm just wondering, what other uses is being considered to be not used for?
So Mark, I'm going to cut in here because usually our time for a public comment in school committee is just for, it's not a question and answer period, but it's just your input. But I will share with you that Mr. Berman does happen to be on our agenda this evening. And if he would like to address any issues with water later on, he's certainly welcome to do that, and you may be able to ask him some questions at that time, if appropriate.
Well, I'll say that question if he's willing to answer it at that time on his agenda.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I know, Michelle Smith, you had something you want to share with us this evening?
Yes, thank you. I have a position statement that I'd like to read into the record that I'm offering on behalf of our entire membership, of the teaching staff and ESPs and nurses and secretaries. This is our position on the reopening plan. The Ashland Educators Association has engaged in a thoughtful and collaborative process with Superintendent Jim Adams to craft a plan and protocols that would facilitate the safe reopening of schools in a hybrid model. We appreciate the transparency with which this has unfolded and the extensive measures that have been taken to meet CDC and OSHA guidelines. We also appreciate public statements that the safety of our staff and students is a priority. All of this notwithstanding, there remain too many factors that we, the association, feel make a return to any form of in-person learning a poor decision for the 2021 school year until such time as a vaccine has been made widely available. While the safety measures put in place may likely protect many, if not a majority of students, from contracting the virus, there remain educators who will be at a significantly increased risk of exposure. Casting a broad net of safety is not enough. On behalf of these staff members, it is our position that the potential for infection and lifelong medical complications for even a minority of our membership and students is unacceptable. A lack of widespread, rapid, accurate, and free testing renders data mildly useful at best and puts educators and students in a position of being reactive only after the risk of exposure has occurred. Asymptomatic students, for whom testing may seem unnecessary, will walk through our doors every morning, bringing with them the potential for infectious spread undetected by state and local metrics. This includes not only students who resign to Ashland, but potentially students who come from communities with higher infection rates. This means two full days in two consecutive weeks of potential exposure and subsequent infection from a single asymptomatic student. This will be compounded by students who arrive at school with symptoms when they should have been, when they should have stayed at home. While there may be some that are stating that children did not spread the coronavirus as easy, as easily, there are scientific counter arguments that children carry as much of the virus as adults. Again, while CDC recommended protocols of mask wearing and hand washing may greatly reduce transmission from students, it will not eliminate it 100%. This is a risk we cannot support. In addition to this unavoidable risk, there are other factors that we predict will render this model ineffective and/or unsustainable. We foresee an inevitable barrier to the inability to maintain an adequate level of instructional staff. Considering the need for staff quarantines, the need to request leave to be at home with their own children, and the ongoing lack of substitute teachers, we anticipate an inability to maintain appropriate instructional staff in the classrooms. This will undoubtedly result in repeatedly pulling staff from their current roles to cover, potentially reducing services to other students. We believe a switch to full remote is predictable and imminent. We believe that eliminating the risk of exposure while we await that inevitability by working in full remote from the start is the most responsible choice to provide consistent instruction that is safe for our entire staff. Why do we feel the need to wait for students or staff to become ill to make this decision? This is not a position we have arrived at lightly. It is only after going through the rigorous planning for a hybrid model that we can see the un concealed gaps. We have a dedicated staff of educators who are committed to maintaining the instructional integrity that has consistently placed us as a highly ranked school district. We, as their association leadership, are committed to protecting the safety of our entire membership so that they may continue to provide for the children and families of Ashland long after we are looking at COVID-19 in the rearview mirror. Respectfully submitted, Michelle Smith, Association President. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Absolutely, thank you. Is there, I see a lot of extra faces here this evening, and is there anyone else who would like to share anything with us? This is the chance. So please feel free. All right, seeing none, I guess we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is our COVID updates from Mr. Adams, and then the subheadings under there. Jim, you can start to lead us through that, if you would, please.
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Sergeant Berman first for the presentation.
Sure.
Before we get into any of the discussion with regard to phases of learning and transition. So Ed, what would you like me to do first? Do you want me to bring something up, or do you just want to start?
Yes, let me just, I just think it's important for me to first explain about the testing and how that works, everybody. So firstly, everyone hears about the different types of testing that's out there. You hear that there's antibody testing, antigen testing, and PCR testing. And I think it's important to clarify what each one of those types of testing does. So what antibody testing actually tells us is whether the person had an exposure, it could be a recent exposure or an exposure in the past. The only way to confirm somebody that's gone for antibody testing is to send them for a PCR test. So when we, at the Board of Health, when we get one of those acknowledgements that somebody tested positive with antibodies, we actually send them for a PCR test. Then there's also, many of you have heard about this antigen testing. What the Department of Public Health has said with antigen testing is that you do get a lot of false positives. So we, again, if anybody that comes, that whose test comes through as a positive through the Board of Health, we then send them for a PCR test. So the actual, and the accuracy rate on a PCR test is about 97% accurate. Where a PCR test, I'm sorry, where an antigen test can be in the high 60s, low 70%. So I think it's important just to know that we are sending people for these PCR tests. And as we are, as I'm talking about testing, I do want to also let everybody know that I did apply to the state for a license for us to be a testing center, and actually today we ordered for the town our own PCR testing machine with hopefully delivery sometime in September. So I just thought that was important to make sure people understand that. Any questions on that before I move on, or?
Ed, can you just explain the testing and what the availability to our staff will be as it relates specifically to the schools?
Sure. Again, and I'm going to be working very closely with Audrey LaCroy on this. So what our vision is, is once we have this machine in place, if any staff member in the town, whether it's a teacher or someone on the town side, feels that they potentially had an exposure, or it's one of those people that may have had to travel out of state and needs a test, they will, that those tests will be available to all town employees. And I'm going to be working with Audrey and all of her staff to make this available to all the teachers if they need it.
Laura, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure, Mark, go ahead.
Thanks for being with us tonight. Just a couple of questions on testing. One, would there also be testing available through the town for a student who might be exhibiting symptoms? That's sort of one question. And the other is, what's the current turnaround time on the PCR tests?
So, okay, so let me answer the second part first. So if you go to one of the state's testing sites right now for a PCR test, you are getting your results within 24 to 72 hours is the turnaround, and it is averaging out to about 48 hours, you're getting your result back. If we bring this in-house, for example, for the staff, we will have the machine. So we will, we'll have you swab, we'll put it in the machine, and in eight to 10 minutes, you're going to have your answer. On the student part, that's something I still need to work out with Superintendent Adams and with Audrey LaCroy.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ed before we move on?
All right, so the other piece that I just wanted to make everyone aware of is that, and so that many of you know, I am in daily communication with Audrey LaCroy and with Superintendent Adams. And I am actually supplying Superintendent Adams' data every day. So he knows if we get any more confirmed cases or probable cases. The one thing that I also found very interesting was I thought in Ashland that we would actually see a spike over the last couple of weeks because of the free testing that was going on at Keith Tech. And we did not see that spike, which I thought was really interesting. And what I'd like to, if Superintendent Adams could share, I want to share some graphs that I produce weekly, and also, these are sent to Superintendent Adams, and they're actually on the town's website also. So Jim, can we do the one by age? I think that's a good one to show first.
Let me see what I have here.
And the data you're about to see is current as of right now. This was just updated. So what you'll see on this graph here is confirmed cases and probable cases. Again, a confirmed case is somebody that has had a positive PCR. A probable case is anybody that's had antibody testing or antigen testing. And obviously, you can see here in April is when we had our spike, but I do, and I'm going to show you another graph in a minute, that spike is also because we had outbreaks at two of our nursing facilities, Waterview Lodge and the Residence at Valley Farm. So that's also where you see that spike. And if you see, we are pretty much heading in the down direction, which I like to see. The chart you're seeing here is by week, broken down by the weeks. And Jim, if you could switch to the other graph. So the other thing that I also found very useful, which I know is very useful, especially for the schools, is I do break down the confirmed and probable cases by age group. Let's wait for that to come up. So again, so you have your confirmed cases and cases that have cleared. So what a cleared case is, is somebody that we have removed from either isolation or quarantine. So as you can see, let, we'll look at the less than 19 category. We've had six probables in that category, and all six are clear. And even in the confirmed cases, we've had 19 confirmed, and this data goes back to January 1st through today, and 19 that have cleared. So in the, in the less than 19 age category, we have no active cases in Ashland from the data that we pull out of the system every day. And again, I won't go through every age category, but if you look at the last category, so right now in Ashland, we've had a total of 273 confirmed cases since January 1st, and we've cleared 262 of those. So you see our numbers of people that we're actually tracking at this moment in time are very low. And I just thought to have these graphs and if you'd be able to see it, really kind of tells the picture of what's happening in Ashland. Questions?
Thanks, Ed. I'll open it up for questions. Mark? I think you need to unmute yourself, please.
Yes, thank you. Okay, this chart here is, um, it's telling about age, I'm going past the school age group, of course, but I'm going from the, from the 60, 69 to clear. Is that basically, is that basically non-hospitalization cases, too?
It includes both. Both are included in these numbers.
So that, to me and to you, means that this 211, you still got to catch up on 262, 273, is that right?
Correct, but of those 11, remember, they, on the confirmed cases, we have to wait the 10 days, once they're, once they've had symptoms, to clear them. You cannot clear them before 10 days are up.
So the, it comes down to the bottom, right, with the yellow, which means probable, yeah, okay. Is probable a thing to worry about, or is that still within the testing data time?
So, so it's twofold. Number one, so when they draw antibody labs, when they draw your blood for antibodies, there's IgG antibodies and IgM antibodies. If you have IgG antibodies, that means it's an exposure in the past. But again, we, a lot of these people will ask them to go for a PCR anyway, and a lot of them were just waiting to get their PCR results.
Okay, one last one. This goes to the, to the state map, when they have the red, the green, white, and green, white, whatever the colors are to around the whole state. Where is Ashland in that?
We're in the green right now.
Thank you, done.
Jim, I'm not sure.
Nope, we're good, Ed, I'm just trying to stop.
I just do want to reiterate everything to everybody, you know, regardless of what happens, and I will be in everyday contact with Audrey and the nurses, and if anything ever does happen, we will be working on this as a team. It's not going to be one person making it, it'll be, we'll be working it as a team, and that's what we've been doing all summer so far.
So I'm going to, I'm going to keep Ed around for the next component, which is working through the phases of learning and the transitioning between environments, and I think it's important, I want to show what Ed was talking about as it relates specifically to the age groups. I do it a little differently than Ed. Let me pull it up here. This is a chart, okay. Sorry, my God, I put my dog in. Come on. Apologize for that. Okay, so this is a chart that I work on. When Ed says he gives me data every day, it's, I tend to take the data and put it in a chart that allows us to, allows me to look at our trends within the community. And I have it broken out by age group, so I take the data and I, and I put it into the, my spreadsheet, whether it's age zero to 10, a confirmed case, and a cleared case. So this is just for August, and I've been tracking it for June, July, and August, but this is just a month of August. And what you'll notice is, the way the state calculates the color, green, yellow, red, or clear, where you should be, is based on a 14-day rolling number of cases. So if I scroll down, and I think what's telling about is, if you notice in Ashland, specifically in August, through the first 24 days, we've had one case of an 11 to 14-year-old that was confirmed and cleared. And the next time we have any cases is when you get to the age group of 21 to 40, and then upwards, the largest group is the 41 to 50. But this is what it looks like, and I, and I track this because I think it's important for me and Ed and Audrey and folks to understand what really is happening locally, as opposed to just what's happening at the state level, and what age group. Obviously, we're concerned because we're dealing with, with students, and how does that trend look? And so the rolling 14 days is we've had six cases, and Ed, correct me if I misspeak, but these are six cases that have not cleared yet. So they haven't reached that threshold where they drop off from the previous 14 days.
Correct.
But what happens is then it becomes a calculation. And this right here, just so you know, these are the ages of the, of the confirmed cases of the individuals. So there were two cases on the 13th, it was a 46-year-old and a 62-year-old. On the 17th, it was a 46 and 49, and for me, again, it's my own data, it's in the same household. So, and then the one Ed was, you know, is a 21-year-old, the last one we've had. And then we calculate an incidence per 100,000, and that's the, that's what I'm going to slide over to, is this document, because I think it's important to see this. As this is the document I'm going to be asking you to consider. About two weeks ago, the governor and the commissioner of education put out a, put out a metric for folks to consider within communities with regard to schools, and whether or not we should be open for in-person learning or remote learning only, et cetera. And you can see there were, there are four distinct boxes, the red, yellow, green, and the unshaded. So what I do is I try to make sure that I'm calculating this color, if you will, every single day, and taking a look at what's happening within our community. And we're clearly, you know, entrenched in the green, so we have less than four cases per 100,000, where if you go back to that document I just showed you, as of today, it's 2.3. And so it fluctuates daily, right, depending upon the number of cases that exist that are confirmed. And this was just one of the metrics that, that the state said, well, you should really consider this. If you're in a unshaded, you know, area, there should be no reason why you're not back in person, full-time with everybody. If you're in green, full-time in person or a hybrid model. If you're in yellow, and to me, I read this as the lower end of the yellow, then you could be hybrid or remote, and obviously, if you're in the red area, you're in the remote section. So the challenge is, how do we create a metric for our community and our educators and our parents that we feel comfortable and safe with when we see incidents increase, when we see the number of cases locally rise, not just from a state level, but locally in Ashland? And as Ed said, we've got to be thoughtful of when we're looking at cases, we could have five cases tomorrow, and that total per 100,000 is going to increase, but what if those five were all isolated to one of the care centers? How does that really look differently than it does if it happened in the schools? And so this was one part of it that I started looking at, was this is a 14-day metric, so it's, it's looking at a two-week cycle as to how you're doing within your community. So in having conversations, you know, with, with Ed and Audrey and others, I felt like we needed to have, we need to have a plan, a phased approach, if you will, to determine whether we stay in the hybrid, to Michelle's point earlier with, with her comments about, is it inevitable that we will end up in a remote? And if so, what does that look like? And how, how do we gauge to move into that remote? And then what happens if, you know, the numbers, you know, then drop? How do we get back into the hybrid model? And how do we phase into a full-time, all students and staff in the building model? So what I'm suggesting we consider, and the school committee consider, is that, as I shared with you, our goal is to have, obviously, and it's the goal of all our teachers and educators, they'll tell you to a person, our goal is to get all students in our, in our schools, learning that they want to be with our kids. But we want to do it in a way that is safe and healthy for all. And so you have to have some sort of metric to do this, and guidelines. And this is where I've landed, and I'm asking for the support, is that in lieu of a successful treatment or vaccine, to move for, into an, into a full in-person model, the district will need at least two consecutive weeks of data to indicate it is safe to do so. So that means we would have to be in this unshaded So that means we would have to be in this unshaded area, and I'll get to that in a second, for two consecutive weeks before we even consider going into, uh, a full in-person, uh, teaching. Because what, what we believe is, we need a lot of planning, uh, even moving from a remote to a hybrid, or, excuse me, a hybrid to a full in-person. We have a lot of equipment and stuff we've moved out of our schools and out of our classrooms. And eventually, those have to become, come back into the rooms. And they have to be, uh, we have to have twenty-five chairs, desks in the room, uh, in order to, to have all students in the classroom. Uh, we can't do that in, you know, a weekend. Uh, we need time to, to, to be able to plan this. Transportation's another component of this, right? So now we would be transporting more kids on a daily basis. So where I've landed is thinking about a couple of different, um, models that require us to do, um, I, I ran a lot of if, if-and statements, if, you know, if, if-or statements, if this occurs, then we do this, um, if-ands and then's, and, and this is where I landed based on looking at state data, local data, and trying to, uh, combine the two. So for instance, in order for us to, to be in a, uh, full in-person, everyone there, we would need to have, uh, cases for that fourteen-day period of zero cases to one-point-nine-nine cases, and the state of Massachusetts positivity rate is between zero and one percent. So the state positivity rate, I think we have to identify what that means. Uh, that is the rate of the number of individuals who are confirmed positive based on the number of tests given. So for instance, today, uh, it, I, I forget the actual numbers, but again, the rate was one-point-five, uh, positivity rate at the state level. Um, so in order to reach that zero to one percent, um, for a two-week stretch, consistent, it, it, it's gonna be quite challenging, to be honest with you. So in the hybrid model, uh, one-point-nine-nine, again, I said we're at two-point-three, uh, to six-point-nine-nine. That's, if you go back to the yellow up top, it's between four and eight. Um, you know, that, the seven, eight upper, um, to me, it pushes us towards the remote, and that's why I'm, I'm suggesting that, that we have that number, um, as a seven-plus, uh, and, and the four-plus for the positivity rate. The data, as I said, I collect it daily from Ed, and we have these conversations daily. I presented this to the Board of Health, um, a week or so ago, I forget how long it was. And they like this plan and this approach, uh, that we're taking. The data comes out every Wednesday, uh, but what we're suggesting is, or what I'm suggesting is that on every Friday, the school committee, uh, will have the data on Wednesday night. Then on Friday, a decision is made for the upcoming week of learning. So if we fell into this seven-plus and four-plus, uh, cases, then on that Friday, we're telling the community and, and our educators, we're out for the week. Our, our numbers are too high. We, we cannot, um, we do not feel it's a safe environment to be in. And, and I think what we're trying to do is try to be as transparent with the community as possible to say, we are looking at this data, I'm looking at it daily, as is Ed, but we have to have a metric in place that, that tells us we are going to move into one of these models of learning, whether it's in-person, hybrid, or, or full-remote. So, uh, that's, that's what I'm looking to do, uh, and ask for your support on. Uh, and I will open it up for questions, and I know Ed is here to answer some as well. So, school committee members.
Yeah, who's got some questions? I can't see everybody, so just...
Let me, I'm gonna stop sharing.
Okay.
Well, keep, keep that up for a minute, Jim.
Okay, yep, okay.
The, for the hybrid, uh, were you intending to overlap, or was that supposed to start at two for the confirmed, for our case per hundred in Ashland?
Uh, it should've been two. Yep, yep, two-point-oh, yep.
All right, and, um, and I just wanna make sure that, um, things haven't changed, but this is, this'll be, we're using this metric, and we've kind of talked, and I, I express some concern about trying to have some programmatic way to address something we've never been in before, and that's, and how problematic that is. But, but this is something that's going to ensure we have discussions at those points to put here, uh, to where you said earlier, if we have that spike and we are at, you know, uh, seven-point-five, but if we took out a, uh, a, um, a spike in one of our care, care facilities or something like that, we would be within our hybrid, we might be able to make a, a different choice. We're not just taking the numbers and, hey, if it matches this, we're gonna do that. Um, or heck, if we, if we, if we saw up out of the trend and we were at six-point-eight, but it was not looking good and we're continuing up, we could make a decision, even though we're not technically in the remote, to go remote, right? So this is just a tool to, one of the many factors that we're gonna be looking at, at each Friday, right?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a guiding document for us to look at, and, and I think that's where the language is important that we put in here, um, that, that we review all of the data that's presented to us. And, and having that continued conversation with, with, you know, Sergeant Berman and, and the COVID, um, task force in town, uh, is important.
Yeah, so that, that's my only comment, is that I don't want guardians coming back to us and saying, well, you said they would do this if this happened.
Yep.
And we are held hard and fast to those rules, where we still need to think of some other data, because one of the things for me with the state positivity rate, and Ed, I guess this is a question for you, like, how many tests total would you say you've seen in the last two weeks for Ashland?
Well, unfortunately, the system doesn't give us tests. I have to wait for that Wednesday data from the state. That, that data comes from the state on Wednesdays, how many Ashland residents were tested. So I can't pull that out daily. So...
So like, what was it, so, and it's week to week, so like, last Wednesday, when you pulled the data, it was for that prior Wednesday to Tuesday, or Thursday to Wednesday period?
I can, I can, I can bring that up and show that if you want.
Yeah, just 'cause, so my only concern with the state positivity rate is that it's a little, it can be a little bit false, uh, when you think of Winthrop. Like, Winthrop's going through a, a little bit of a surge right now, but at the same time, they've asked the entire city to test. So theoretically, your positivity rate for testing that many people is going to go down, which could be a false sense of security.
Well, so, so Erin, and, and I've had this conversation with Jim about how we use that metric. Positivity rate is really, uh, something that tells us whether we're doing enough testing. Um, it's not, it's not necessarily about, um, the, the rate relative...
Oh, Dad, um, the next range will need to be cut and grilled, too.
Uh, I, I, I'll mute Lisa. I, I thought she was jumping in for, for something else, um, but...
She sounds delicious, though.
Right?
We'll be over soon.
Yeah, because there was also talk about a local positivity rate, which the challenge with positivity rates, when you get a small enough cohort, that it almost becomes meaningless, right? That's, that's why the state positivity rate is really a metric to say, are we doing enough testing? So if you look at the positivity rates back in April, they were sky-high because we were only testing sick people, which means we're missing a bunch of people. If we have a low positivity rate, that means we're less likely to be missing people that are, are sick. And, and so that's, so, and, and that's why it's a combination thing, because you can't just go by one, one metric or another.
Okay.
And, and Ed, keep me honest, if, if I said anything that was out of line.
Um, so I can add one thing in here, too, like, so when, when we talk about testing, so what happens is, all the labs in the state, when, when somebody tests positive, we, once that positive test happens, I get notified immediately. So this, I get an email that I have a positive Ashland resident. So myself, Nancy Cleary, um, Amy Childs, or the contact tracer, we get on that right away so that we can start that contact tracing. So, yes, we don't, we only get the how many people were quote "tested" every Wednesday, but any positive case that comes up, we get it immediately, so it, there's no delay on that at all.
I apologize, I'm, my internet's... The, okay.
Erin, do you mind if I jump in with another one?
Yeah, I'm good, thanks, Mark.
So, Ed, maybe if you could talk a little bit, I mean, I think Jim may have alluded to this at the outset, but can you talk a little bit about what these numbers are based on? You know, I mean, there's, there's a chart, and I know that, you know, they're, they're issued by the state. Um, but are there, I think there's some numbers out there that are like from the WHO, from CDC. Um, and if you could just talk to us a little bit about sort of where these metrics come from as, as sort of a, how do we know that we're picking the right numbers? You know, whether it's two-point-oh or twelve-point-oh, you know, how, how are we making judgments on what number to use?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I'm, I think we really need to go with the state's numbers of who's being tested, especially at these free testing sites, because all these tests, a majority of them are going to one lab, so the state is getting that data, and, and I think that is the most accurate data is taken from our testing sites and our hospitals and doctors' offices who are reporting into the system every day. And... I think that's the best way to do it.
Yeah, I, I think, maybe I wasn't clear, I guess, about my, my question, but it was mostly, what it's really asking about is, you know, the state has come up with these numbers that put you into sort of the red, green, yellow kind of categories. And I guess what I'm looking for is some understanding of why do we think that those are good numbers? Not just because the state said so, but are they based on stuff that comes from other, um, resources like the WHO or CDC? What's more about the metrics we're using, not the specific numbers that we're getting?
Yeah, I'll be honest, I'm not really sure how to answer that question right now. I mean, I could try to get the info.
I mean, I thought the WHO had a number, um, that it was suggesting was one where you didn't have to... And I don't wanna, I don't wanna misrepresent it, because it's not something I'm intimately familiar with. But I thought there was some number that was like a five-point-oh number, but not sure if it's even talking about the same kind of data point.
Yeah, so, Mark, it, it, the World Health was using five, five percent, five-point-oh is the positivity rate to open businesses, so it didn't, it, it didn't actually drill it down into school systems. So what you'll notice across the Commonwealth is a lot of people are focusing on the four percent and below, uh, not look, using higher number, but actually using a lower number, um, from other superintendents that I've spoken with.
And my other question, thank you, Jim. The other question, I guess, is, can you just, um, give us a sense of sort of, when we look at these numbers that are translated into a number out of per hundred thousand? And I think maybe Jim's illustration helped us a little bit, but when I think about Ashland, it has roughly seventeen thousand, five-hundred people, eighteen thousand people. And I know we're, the numbers are looking at over a rolling two-week period, but, you know, is that, is, it's obviously not the same as saying, if you took a hundred thousand people, um, you'd have two cases. I mean, it's, it's more than that, but is it really two cases per day? Is that what it really translates into? That, does my question make sense?
It does.
Okay.
I'm gonna...
Yeah, to, to either, whomever can answer it. I mean, Jim, if you understand, I'm just trying to...
Yeah, yeah, so maybe Jim...
I wanna understand in a way that makes sort of common sense to me.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull something up.
Rolling daily average, um, Mark, so they take the fourteen days, and so you might have had a spike of seven, but you've had zeros all the other days. Um, you know, you, you'd only be at point-five for that, so, so, for the, and then you multiply it out for the hundred thousand. Um, so it's a rolling out, daily average. So it is a daily average over a fourteen, a rolling fourteen window day, or fourteen day, sorry.
So if we use the, the data points that Jim had put up earlier about what's going on in Ashland, where I think there were six, maybe six, that, six active cases over the last fourteen, if we don't have any new cases, um, you know, over the next fourteen days, our local number's gonna be zero.
No, no, so let me, yeah, let me, I'm gonna pull it up now. I, I was just trying to update it here. Because it is complicated, and I, and I know, I thought I saw Chaz on here earlier. I, I, I had to sit...
The math guy, right?
Well, I had to sit with our two math guys, uh, Josh Wixter and Chaz, last week to, to go through understanding how we actually, uh, how it's calculated, uh, per, uh, per incident rate. Uh, and so what happens is, Mark, you should be able to see my screen now.
Yep.
So if we go back fourteen days, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen days, right? So it, it adds up the total number of cases in that fourteen-day period.
So those are new cases, right?
All cases. They could, so these two here from eight-thirteen have not been cleared yet. They're confirmed. So like Ed said, until that period of time that they're, they're, they're not in that fourteen-day window, where there would be confirmed, or Ed, you said ten, um, those, those numbers stay in your overall number, okay? So in order to calculate what our incident rate in Ashland is per one hundred thousand, is, there's a formula, and I'm gonna show you. It, so it's, I don't wanna get too technical here, but eighteen thousand, eighteen thousand is more accurate for our, that they're using as our, our census for our number of residents, okay? Not, not, I don't know what number you said, it was pretty...
Yeah, I said seventeen-five or eighteen, that's fine.
Yeah, it's eighteen thousand. That's the number I'm using, and it's pretty close to the number that the state's using. I'd have to dig more deeply into the, uh, if the state's using eighteen thousand, three hundred, or five hundred, or whatever, but eighteen thousand's a, a pretty solid number for us to use. Um, so in this instance, you would have seven cases over this fourteen-day period, multiplied by a, by a hundred thousand, so we get seven hundred thousand. And you divide that by your, your town population to get a number. And then that number is divided by fourteen, because it's over those fourteen days, and that's how they determine the incidence per day of a hundred thousand. And so it, it can change, so, but if I add in a zero for eight-twenty-five, for instance, it's not going to change anything in terms of the incident rate, because the, the fourteenth is, was zero, right?
Right.
So that's not...
So our number, yeah, so if I, I think, what I was trying to get to, but I think it's helpful with the chart up there, is our, our number doesn't really change unless we have really four more, four more days in a row of zeros. To the point where the seventeenth, those cases have been cleared, and now our fourteen-day window starts on the eighteenth.
Right, so let's assume, you know, on the twenty-fourth, because there's a lag, and that's why Ed and I look at this on a daily basis. Uh, there could be a lag in the confirmed case on the twenty-fourth, so the twenty-fourth passes, uh, and, and the system wasn't updated, or as Ed said, uh, Ed, what'd you use the term this morning? The, another, uh, town, it may, they assign it to our town, what, what was that?
Yeah, so, so what happens periodically, like, this happened to us last week, um, with the, um, with the forty-six-year-old. Um, what happened was, that person works in Natick, and their company did testing. And what the, what the gentleman did there was he used his Natick address. So when the Natick Board of Health called him and said, you know, I'm, you know, we're calling from the Natick Board of Health, and, well, what's your address? They, because we always confirm address. They said, oh, he says, oh, no, I live in Ashland. So they have to go into the system, when they transfer that case, when they change his address to Ashland, I get notified right away, so that's why the, the numbers fluctuate constantly.
Right, so, so, Mark, to your point, so let's assume tomorrow Ed calls me and says, hey, Jim, we've got two cases that were, uh, that were somewhere else, and they confirmed them on the twenty-fourth, right? So we add in two cases to the twenty-fourth, it adjusts our rolling fourteen to nine, and now our incident goes up to three-point-five-seven for that period of time. Um, that's why I like to look at it daily, and, and Ed gives me the information daily. The state does it on that weekly basis. And, you know, but I also think, I'm gonna stop this, I also think it'd be quite challenging for us as a community to, to look at a, a transition, uh, phasing learning program, to every day, say, to a... for us as a community to, to look at a, a transition, uh, phasing learning program to every day, say to a family. Hey, by the way, uh, we hit this number today and we have to go to remote tomorrow. But tomorrow we hit the number and, oh, we can go back to hybrid or.
So they're. It's turning out going down that path.
Yeah.
No, I, I appreciate that. I, I really, because we're going to be asked to, to sort of, I think, bless an approach. I really want to be sure I understand and others understand sort of what the numbers are, what they represent and, and why they're, why they're good indicators. Um, to be relying upon.
I, I just, I, I, I know Michelle and I have had this conversation numerous times. I, I've asked her if, if the MTA or any of the other organizations have produced a metric, a phased approach. And no one has really come up with anything that we think is, um, that there is definitive, right? It's, you've got to figure out what's right for your community, uh, and using the data we have. So, uh, you know, this is sort of where I've landed and I think falls within sort of the, the state recommendations, but not, I, I err more on the side of caution for sure uh, with this, uh, to move into, uh, the remote. Uh, we're not getting up into the eights. Uh, it's earlier or after eight, so.
So I think maybe one last question for you, Jim, is, do you, have you given any thought to how you would be communicating sort of our status to the community on a week to week basis, you know, particularly if, if there is a trend evolving, but it's, you know, it's still keeping us solidly in the hybrid, but the numbers creeping up over time. Because one of the things I thought about is, is, you know, you shared this information to us, with us earlier is, you know, I think putting this metric out, making sure the community is aware of it and knowing parents generally want their kids to be able to go to school safely. And we all want our staff to be able to go to school safely. It gives everybody an understanding. We're, we're all in this together. We all are. And if we want to keep schools open, um, either in a hybrid model or get to an in-person one at some reasonable timeframe, everybody's got to do their part and be careful. You know, and, and so I'm thinking that, you know, if, um, there's a weekly update or something that along with the newsletter that you typically send out that sort of just is, you know, here's where we are as of now. That might be helpful to think about in the future.
Yeah, no, I, I'm absolutely, um, as part of this, uh, plan, it, that's why I'm requesting that we meet Friday mornings, uh, as a, as an entire, uh, school committee. Even if it's for five minutes to review the data and then I'm going to share that data with our community on a, on a weekly basis. Uh, and we can, we can show the trends of that, um, of the data. Excuse my dog. She's got some anxiety issues. So if you can hear her, so, um. But yeah, no, it, it has to be reported. I think it has to be, uh, reported every week to our community.
Yeah, and, and, and as we're talking about data and, and Jim and Ed talk about it daily with, with Audrey and everything. I think it's important to also note that, uh, the data relative to what, what they're not on that, um, that document, there's a link in there to the state data that comes out every, every Wednesday. So the data is available every Wednesday to the community as well. So then I, I don't want anybody to walk away thinking that, oh, well, I don't have Ed and Jim's data, so I can't even, you know, look or understand what's going on myself. But there's a link to the state data in that document that comes out every Wednesday.
And, and my graphs are updated every week and put on the town's website. So you can see those every week also.
Any other questions on this? And I'll just reiterate, I've shared this with Jim and I know the point's already been made here tonight and it's really important that we understand this chart and where the numbers come from and why this guidance, at least the way I view it, is going to be opening up conversations, but not necessarily the final word because there are so many other factors to consider as well as just the way this whole thing has been going. I mean, there could be factors that come our way in any direction that we weren't anticipating because new information comes out or you just want to be clear, at least from my point of view, that it's, it's a tool and it's important and it's guidance. But there are lots of other factors that may sway the decision one way or the other. Anybody else on that before we move into the next part of this?
And I did put in this document at least every Friday through October. Uh, so again, this would be a, a document that would go into the reopening plan. Uh, and it would be something I would share with the community this week, uh, starting, uh, this week, saying this is every week you're going to get an update on this component. Uh, and it, it could mean, uh, that we're in a remote, uh, learning environment based on the numbers and, uh, conversations with the school committee. I think, I think the one, one thing I would change on this, not, not the metric itself, but I would change a little bit stronger wording, uh, in here that talks about, um, the school committee, uh, looking at all the data applicable within our, our community and coordination with, uh, Ed and the Board of Health.
And, and Lori, do we need a, a, a vote to have Jim, uh, include this on, in our plan?
We do.
Yes. Who's got a motion for that?
I will move that we, um, authorize in support, uh, superintendent to add the, uh, transition metric documentation to the plan as presented uh, with any, uh, verbiage updates that he sees fit.
Seconded by Aaron. Uh, all in favor? Mark Terry?
Aye.
Aaron Williams?
Aye.
Kathy Bates?
Aye.
Paul Kendall?
Aye.
An aye for me as well. That passes. Thank you. Um, and Jim, just to be clear too, on just process wise, so the members have an understanding. Are we going to have a standing, um, school committee meeting scheduled for every Friday morning or is this just if necessary or how do you want to do this?
I, I think we should have it set up as a standing, uh, meeting and then we can cancel based on, you know, when that data comes out. But, but I think we need to have it, uh, be there, uh, for discussion purposes for sure.
Okay. Is that, is that something that, uh?
That's why I recommend so.
Okay. And, and just unless there's, uh, a quorum of people that are saying that absolutely would not work. I think we can move forward with that, but I do want everyone to, I'm not asking you to commit to every Friday meeting, but uh, is there at least a quorum of people that could see appearing for a meeting on a Friday if an important decision needs to be made about changing the plan? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I, I, I would think that, uh, at least I'll speak for myself, probably like eight AM, something that's.
Real early.
Yeah.
Less likely to collide with other obligations is probably best.
If we do it early in the morning too, then it gives Jim a chance to get that information out.
Yep.
Need be, okay.
But no, I, yeah, I'm going to publish it either way, Kathy. I think that was my, was weekly publish it. So, yeah.
Okay.
Can I make a comment before you move on?
Sure, Mark.
Thank you. According to all the numbers and the calculations and everything that's going to be out there to, um, to Mr. Terry's comment about the, about the numbers itself, is the state coordinates with CDC, which CDC coordinates with World Health, the World Health. So the number is there for all, all, um, people involved in, doesn't make a difference. It's business, school, whatever. It's all broken, it's all broken down to it. And the five, and the five number that Mr. Allen's brought up is just a, the, it's just a component, not a whole. So if you gotta go by the whole and the CDC requirements and World Health, it's, it would be going easier there with the fall. And to break it down is, is the, um, divide and all that is basically calculated by this, by the single standard numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, moving forward. What's next?
One more piece of, of, that I'm asking for some, uh, approval to add into the plan is, uh, as, as you know, uh, and as all of our faculty knows, you know, and, and Mike can attest to this yesterday with the new teacher orientation. Uh, whenever we're wearing masks, it certainly, I think breathing does become, um, you know, a little more labored for some of us. Uh, and, you know, obviously having, uh, mask breaks throughout the day, we, we're, we're scheduling those throughout the day, teachers will be doing those, et cetera. But, um, we also get, uh, hot heat uh, and humid days in the fall and the spring, uh, quite, quite often. And we, what I want to be able to do is have a metric. Or, you know, just like we would do for a snow day, uh, superintendent has the ability to cancel, uh, school based on on snow and conditions within, uh, our facilities, et cetera. Uh, so hot, humid days and, and the windows and the fan use. Uh, I, I brought this to the Board of Health as well. Uh, and using a metric of the, of the, the heat index that if, uh, we fall within a certain category, that, uh, we can declare a remote learning day specifically, um, uh, for, for the school, uh, that, that it pertains to. Uh, I, I think long gone are the days where we're going to have, uh, snow days. I think they'll be remote now. But to me, this is important, um, especially I think of the high school and some of the south facing. You know, I, I go up on, uh, the, the second floor and you got your world language classrooms at times. I've been in those and they're quite warm, uh, in the afternoon. The ones are on the, the, the drive inside of the, of the building and similar at the middle school. So, um, we are allowing fan use, uh, but they need to be box fans and based on the guidance, uh, Joe's not on tonight, but based on the guidance that we've received is that the, the fans have to be in the windows pushing, circulating the air out. And they're not there for cooling purposes. It's for air circulation purposes. And, uh, that's, you know, that's what this memo is that I want to add into, uh, the document just to, to show people that, again, it's about health and safety and, uh, that we're going to use fans, but if it gets too warm, excuse me, hot and humid, uh, that we're going to go into a remote day. And we can gauge that week in advance, right? We're looking at the, the temperature and I'm always constantly looking at, um, the weather. And I, I knew, uh, two days ago, Monday was going to be quite warm in our buildings when we did our air quality tests and actually I read them today and it said out, outside temperature was quite warm today. And this is inside temperature is a result of that. Then you walk in the buildings today with the airflow and it was much cooler. So we've just got to have some sort of, of, uh, thought process here.
Comments or questions on that from the committee?
I just think, Jim, you said, talking about it early enough, or early enough in talking about it, we just making sure that there's some blast email giving like two hours notice to parents of like, hey, guess what we're thinking about? You know, in two days, there's going to be heat wave, yada, yada. And we're thinking about it to be a remote, a remote day. Please.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Aaron. We are not going to have hot, humid day chats. There'll be none of those. Uh, so tell the kids now, there's no hot, humid day chats, no snow day.
So Jim, just, uh, on that point though, with the other, uh, metric we have.
Yep.
There is a published link people can look to. For this, maybe, you know, direct them to some place where a similar place you're looking to try to forecast that. So that will give them an idea to be on the lookout. Hey, you know, this thing says it's going to be really hot, humid. The heat index is going to go crazy on Thursday. I should be preparing for that. So if you could maybe include that as part of.
I will. Yep, absolutely. And, you know, and we have purchased tents to help with outdoor learning spaces as well. Uh, but again, um, we're talking about internal, uh, if it's really hot outside. Again, we don't have air conditioning in the majority spaces of, of our buildings. And wearing masks can be, um, quite challenging when it's that hot and humid.
I said one more, one question, Lori. Um, Jim, you know, I, I don't know, um, I don't know if there's that much of variation from one building to the next, but would you anticipate this being a building-based decision? Um, or would it be district-wide?
No, it, it, I, there is variation between buildings, Mark. And we would need to be considering, um, it being a building-based decision.
Thank you.
Laura, can I ask a question?
Of course.
So about, about the tents, Jim.
Yeah.
You, you know, you said you've, you've bought tents for each of the schools. So I have a few questions around the tents. So are you, are you anticipating, are you going to have desks set up out there if a classroom wants to go out there? Like, how would that, and can multiple classes fit under this tent or?
So I will leave the, I have, the principals are online tonight. They can answer some of the questions on how they're going to use those tents. Uh, specifically, uh, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, the tents are thirty by forty? Thirty, so. Thanks. So they're thirty by forty. Uh, each building will use them differently, Kathy, uh, for sure. We can use them for lunch. We can use them for outdoor learning spaces. Uh, we can use them for collection of students when they come to school as well, uh, to maintain, you know, before they come into the schools. You know, Kelly, I see, actually I see all of our principals on. Anyone want to give an example of what you're thinking, uh, how those tents will be used?
We will have desks set up to start in order to use it for lunch. But the desks hopefully will be easily movable if we, if band was going to be out there or chorus or people that didn't want to have desks.
So that's another piece there, Kathy, too, is we want to continue with our musical programs and having that outdoor space is important.
I was just going to say, we bought some picnic tables with some of the COVID funds, um, large ones. I can't remember. I think we asked for ten feet and I think Chris was able to get twelve foot tables. So, uh, we can be physically distant and, and we bought about ten of them and no matter what, we figured we could use them in the future as well.
Right. Um, and so was there any discussion, Jim, about, um, you know, triple E mosquitoes and things like that when you're outside? So.
Yeah, that was today.
Right, Ed, people, I'm sure you were asking you that.
That was yesterday's discussion with Audrey. Um, and, uh, we will be, um, notifying the community about our triple E procedures and, uh, processes, um, probably either this Friday or next week. Uh, as we get closer to having students in school, uh, with regard to wearing long sleeve shirts, putting on your own. Uh, again, our, our faculty and staff is not putting on, um, suntan lotion and or, um, that has to be done at home. Um, but yes, triple E is on the forefront of all decisions and when we talk a little bit about athletics, I know Stephen, uh, that's a concern already for us with athletics too. Yep.
Jim, on, on that front, um, while we can't have the closed sides on tents, is, uh, you know, if, if we become a high-risk area for triple E, right? All this is, you know, not happening right now, obviously. You know, would there be a possibility for us to get, um, you know, uh, netting for the sides that's still allowed for the airflow, but might help us with, uh, mosquitoes?
Yeah, Chris and I talked about that actually yesterday. He said, do you want me to order them? I said, nope, not right now. Um, let's, let's play it by ear. So.
Maybe watch the inventories, right?
But no, that was a discussion he and I had yesterday, or maybe it was today. I forgot the days, but.
Who else? Any other questions on that?
So again, I'm just asking for, um, your approval to add this into the reopening, uh, document. Uh, so I can update it and I'm going to, then I'd have to reshare it with the Department of Ed as well.
Who's got the motion?
I move we authorize the superintendent to add his, uh, hot, humid days, windows and fan use, uh, protocols and procedures to our reopening plan as presented. With the addition of a link for, um, parents to be able to predict or, or see what the heat index would be.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Jim. Did you want to add to that?
Well, I was just going to say, um, I've had conversations with Joe Richardson as well, and we're going to routinely take the temperature and humidity in the classrooms as, as part of our practice and protocols, even though we can look at the, the, um, you know, the, the weather forecasting, we just want to continue to update it anyway. We know there are hot spots, if you will, within our rooms and our buildings that we're going to continue to look at that anyway.
Thank you. So that doesn't, um, change the motion made by Paul, seconded by Aaron. All in favor? Mark? Kathy?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Paul? An aye for me as well. That passes. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, moving along is a big one. Um, I, I, I had put on here because again, uh, we typically get our guidance from the Department of Education on Friday night after everyone's gone home. And, uh, recently we've, we've had, had happened to us this past Friday, as you know, with, uh, um, you know, teachers having to teach uh, in the classrooms and, and the ability for educators, uh, kids to come to school during in-person learning. But about two weeks ago, two Fridays ago, it was the athletic bombshell. That here's, here's what we're gonna do for athletics. And how one of the comments was, if you are a are a remote learning environment, then local school committees need to approve students to participate in athletics. So as Lori can attest, as in reading it numerous times, the language was really bad. And how, what does that really mean? And so I actually had a call today, this afternoon, before this meeting. I I called Jeff Riley and I said, really, what is our obligation here? And I said, we're not starting, we're not a remote-only community. He said, then your responsibility is nothing. And it's, it's up to each community if they want to do something, but it was really intended for those communities that are in the red zone, if you will. Where they're only in remote learning and should they be participating in athletics in any way, shape or form. So there's no vote on this. I just wanted to bring that up. But I also have Stephen here tonight where I just want him to give like a, you know, a minute overview of athletics and where we're headed. And on the ninth of September, which is our next meeting, he sent out a package today to you. It's it's lengthy. And I know the Tri, Tri County, Tri Valley is still reviewing this data. The principals and A Ds met today. That's why you didn't get any information any sooner. So Stephen, can you just give a high-level overview of of the things y'all are talking about?
Hey, Jim, before we move into that, just before I forget, based on what you just said, we are starting hybrid.
Correct.
Should we transition to remote based on data? My personal thought is, if given the the protocols and everything we're doing for in-person learning, if that isn't sufficient, then I would imagine when we transition from hybrid to remote, we are also not doing sports. Because if we can't get the kids in the building socially distanced, everything like that, and doing all the things, you know, I I don't see us doing that, but I wanted to get your and I guess Stephen's as well. Thoughts on, have you thought about that and where you stand on that?
So I believe that's the conversation we need to have on the night. When when you get an opportunity to review all of the protocols that the Tri Valley is putting into place with regard to athletics itself. You know, to take a stand on that right now, again, I would have to look at the data on a daily basis like I do and figure out why we're going to the remote. And if we're only going for a remote, how does that impact the other communities that we're participating against? Those are all just things that I have to think about. And again, all I'm saying is what the guidance from the MIA was and the and Department of Ed was, that if you are a remote-only district starting the year and and you're looking to transition in November, you need to take a vote within your community to determine whether you're gonna participate or not.
Can I just pick up on Paul's point? Because I think it's a really good one. Is that, you know, I understand the guidance says, you know, if you're starting remote, you'd have to take a vote. But you know, Paul's positing another scenario, right, which is we move to a remote. And it seems like the the question, the the sequence in time when it happens that we are in remote should beg the same question of, well, if we are remote, why athletics? So I I appreciate your point. We should really hold off on that detailed discussion about that. But if you have an opportunity between now and the ninth to to be able to obtain a clarification from either the MIA or DESI about what would happen in that scenario and whether the school committee needs to take a vote, that'll help frame what action we might have to take in a couple of weeks.
I did. That was the conversation I had today with Jeff Riley. Was if we go, we're we're starting hybrid and if we go to a remote, do we, are we, do we need to take a vote to continue to participate in athletics or not?
And he said no to that?
And he said, no, it's your school committee's decision. It's a local decision. Everything's a local decision. They're, you know, I am using a pun intended. They are punting to us for every decision. They will not make a decision.
Sorry. And well, I just wanted to weigh in on, you know, because Jim and I were talking about this a little bit earlier, as well as when the guidance first came out. And of course, I'm I'm doing, you know, my lawyer thing, looking at what the words actually say. If if one can even make that determination because it was so poorly written and worded and coming out at Friday night. Who knows, you know, if I was in my right mind reading it. But what it actually said was, if you are going remote now, you need to take this vote as a school committee. And there's zero guidance beyond that. So I'm really feeling like if we do end up remote, we're we really don't know the circumstances that are gonna bring us there. Is it gonna be because the whole state shut down and it's gonna be like March when nobody's doing sports or anything? Or is it gonna be because of some unique, something unique to Ashland? And maybe there's a way that we can still do athletics. And if that's the case, we'll take a vote then. If 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 the state doesn't come out with some crazy ten o'clock Friday guidance, you know, between now and then that tells us that we can't. So I guess the way I feel about it is let's just like this small, little teeny piece of guidance that says that we don't need to act now. And I think it's best that we don't look too far beyond that personally.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm fine with that tonight, but on the ninth, I won't be fine with that. This is rolled into our plan and I'll I'll just be frank, I'll need to be convinced. If we, if we, if the data is telling us to move to a remote, I'll need to be convinced how we don't also stop athletics as a one.
Well, I think we, at least this is, maybe this is my opinion and not a fact, but that we always maintain that local control. And that we can always, as a school committee, put that on the agenda and decide to not move forward with athletics in this district. Is that, is that right, Jim? So I don't think we lose our right to do that. Paul, I'm with you. And if there's enough information to do that on September ninth, I'm happy to entertain that discussion. But we we may not know everything that we need to know then, but I don't think that precludes us from making the decision that we think is the best one if we end up remote.
Yeah, and 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 I'm talking about on the ninth, us not having nothing to do with what the state says. Just us having it as part of our transition planning at that point. And making sure that there's at least, if nothing else, an assumption of how we do it. And if we need to pivot based on different, different information, we can do that. But I think at that point, we at least need to establish what our default stance is on.
Right. I I I I could go with that because I think I agree with you. Again, it's just things are changing so quickly and so the guidance is all over the place and who knows what the next one's gonna say.
I don't wanna call it guidance. I literally, I am, I am.
I'm being polite.
I know you are. I I'm, I I've added up to, I have no hearing.
Sorry, Stephen, I I I cut you off short and didn't even have you let you speak and derail the here, but.
No problem. And and listening to this conversation, I just want to reiterate that we're fortunate to be in the Tri Valley League because I think we're all struggling with the fact that decisions are being punted locally to to districts. And I can tell you that in every conversation we have had, whether it's just with athletic directors or with the principals, we are all on board with working together to try and find what works best for the league with the understanding that each district might have times where they need to go rogue, so to speak, and do what they need to do or what we need to do. So we'll certainly talk about more of that on the ninth. But I do just, you know, briefly want to give you an update in terms of where we are. The big thing that came out of the guidance two weeks ago was that the MIA has now created four seasons. You know, there is a fall one season. There's a winter season, then there's a fall two season, which they have already moved. The one decision that they did make was they did move football and competitive cheer to fall two, which is a a new season, which goes February, I think twenty-second through April twenty-fifth, if I remember correctly. And then we have a spring season. So with that, the E A, they've put, you know, all the sports in different risk levels. I can tell you that in the very lengthy packet that you guys now have, our league has done a tremendous job with the help of the principals of putting together a, what I feel is a very, very good plan in terms of getting our kids back out competing, having an opportunity to play and do it safely. So I'm looking forward to sharing that with everybody as soon as I can.
Thanks, Stephen. Anybody else? Okay, moving on then, Jim. Are you ready to go to the next?
Over to Mr. Kendall with the policies.
Okay, Paul, you're up. E D F, E D C F A mask policy.
Yeah, so first I'll I'll give a a general update on the three policies. So we, in our policy subcommittee meeting Monday morning, I believe, we, Kathy and I and Jim reviewed the three policies that are on the agenda. So that's the mask or face covering policy. It's listed as mask policy there, but it's the name of it is face coverings. And then the emergency plans and the sexual harassment policy. So just to, so the mask policy, the need for that is obvious. So that was based on, and that's the state, what I would assume is stable based, depending upon the feedback tonight, that this will be a first read for that one. That's based on M A S C template or example policy. We reviewed emergency plans. We put that on there just because it was part of a bulletin from M A S C to have districts take a look at that. We also had an example from another district who did modify theirs. We don't, we didn't bring anything here because the three of us did not believe that that warrant, that we needed to modify ours at all. There there, the modifications that were done by other districts related to some of the things that we've already done. And we just didn't feel that it was needed to to modify that. We've already done all those things. And quite frankly, I don't think it enabled us. I didn't, I don't think not having it precluded us from doing the things we're already doing. We already have, Jim has the authority to do the things he needed to do and and we've already done the other things. So we're gonna recommend that we keep that policy as is. And then the sexual harassment policy, I was hoping to have a first read for tonight, but there is enough substantive changes to it that we wanted to bring that back next time. So we could, I I do have a version of it that we're we're sharing with our council to review to make sure that the modifications still align. Just feedback on that. The impetus for that was the federal regulations that came down and the need to modify that. And the S C was not very helpful here. They did something that it, first time I saw it and our our attorney said the same thing was was crazy. They combined, so right now we have a sexual harassment policy. And we also have a bullying or harassment policy, then they're separate. Because they really are very distinct things. And the S C, their example policy, combine them into one policy. So we didn't think that's a good idea. Our our attorney doesn't think it's a good idea. Mark, you're free to chime in. I I just, they're they're very different things with very different regulations. So we we went off based on some some guidance from our attorney. But much like some of the other guidance that's coming, we didn't need a massage. It was it was rough and so didn't read very well. So we've made some modifications that are sending it back for his review. We'll bring it, bring it on the ninth and hopefully for a first read there.
Paul, just chiming in to say, I've gone through the exercise of dissecting those policies for clients before, and I agree with the approach you guys are taking. There's too much crammed into one policy that really conflates a lot of different concepts that really can be not in our best interest because it suggests there are rights and and certain things that exist in some circumstances that really don't. So I think the approach of separating it out is the right way to go.
Yeah, and and to be clear, they're separate now and M A S C was combining them. And so, yeah, we're we're leaving them separate. We just need to expand it based on the new regulations. So so we don't have that to review, but we can do the face coverings policy. So I sent that out. I sent out the clean version, but also a red line if you wanted to look at it. And I don't know if you want me to share my my screen. I can certainly share, share this and just point out if what we did here is based on the M A S C example.
It did come as an attachment with, okay, you've got it easily, Paul?
Yeah, I I have. And let me know if I put them side by side, let me know, you're just seeing the
Right.
Okay, good.
Right, I saw the red line version and you've cleaned it up. And this is what you're proposing as a first reading for a new policy.
Right, so the the primary variance from the M A S C example is so a- as as you can see there, it 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 kind of states, has the summary statement at the top. And then it it does provide some examples of when individuals be excused from the requirement. Now, this section isn't, it's one for at the moment. So it's if someone is having trouble breathing, is unconscious, is incapacitated. There's other sections of this that talk about the categorical, people that have tech can be excused from this for, you know, reasons that aren't at the moment reasons. But one of the the primary things we modified is in the next session, the section that talks about time, times when masks can be or face coverings can be taken off. They initially had during physical, physical education classes listed there. And in speaking with Jim, ensuring that this aligns with what our our schools will want to do and our our principals are planning, we struck that. And that, you know, even during our physical education classes, they will be wearing the masks unless it was during a mask break or something like that. Or if they're outside, can be physically distance and and all the other appropriate things that are in the policy. So we cleaned up a little bit of the language here and there, but the next substantive difference is we did add the paragraph, this paragraph here that what doesn't in the other one. Because, you know, we, well, to speak for ourselves, I thought it was very important that we include here guidelines and we say we're gonna publish guidelines and supply that to our community to say what is appropriate. For example, as you know, you'll see in a lot of the communications that our health department put out guidance saying that neck gaiters and things like that with the stretch X, the stretch fabric won't be considered appropriate, right? So won't be an acceptable face covering. So we wanted to ensure that we were publishing that. And then we we modified a little bit of the language in this one, just to be consistent with what our our admin staff was was planning on doing. And it just basically, because this is one that blankets from K, you know, pre-K to twelve, making sure that it didn't just say, if you do X, Y will happen. Because we both want our administrators and faculty to be able to take the appropriate course of action. And that is, if I have a second grader who, oh, he pulled it down accidentally, you talk to him, you you remediate that. But if I have a, someone in the high school who is intentionally being a bonehead and pulls it down and fake coughs on people, that obviously takes a different course of action, right? And so we wanted to make sure that it provided that ability to make the appropriate call, given the circumstances. So those were the primary, primary changes. Kathy or Jim, did you want to add anything to the conversations we had on Monday?
I'll let Kathy go first if you want.
No, I was gonna say, I think you, I think you covered it, Paul.
Yeah, I mean, we, what we want to make sure is we're capturing, as you know, when we're dealing with discipline within the buildings, that principals and system when we're dealing with discipline within the buildings, that principals and system principals and the folks in the building have to have that flexibility. And I don't think it's appropriate necessarily within the policy to identify that. We have certainly talked about that and what our expectations are. And we have those drafted for our principals and our students.
Jim, can you talk about, and Paul, if you can scroll up in the policy? As far as the individuals that are going to be excused, how are you working with the teachers on this? Especially the younger ages in the inclusion classrooms? Where it's essentially an outing and a, it's a HIPAA, to me, a HIPAA issue when other kids are going to go, well, why is that kid not wearing one? How are the teachers going to have those conversations with the students?
Gently. I don't know. We thought about it, Aaron, I don't know how we can actually, I trust our staff will have those appropriate conversations. I, I don't, until we're, I guess until we are faced with that conversation, I don't know how I can answer that. You know, we had, over the summer, we've seen in our extended year program, some of our unique learners wearing masks and we were able to work with them, so.
So the goal is for our unique learners that are coming into the building, the goal is to try to at least have them try and ask first before having exemptions?
Well, and so I, I think it's important to, to note what the exceptions are here. The exceptions, you know, and this is where the M A S C template policy, we did strike something. So if you look at this sentence here, the M A S C policy continued that sentence and said, by signing a waiver. It, it insinuates that there's a waiver to be signed and which is, it's, it's, so if there is an exception, it's not made it spur of the moment to say, hey, you know, this, this particular student no longer needs to, to wear a mask. They'll, obviously, the, the faculty and the, and the staff in the building have the ability to, you know, put, put students in positions where if they need a break or they need to be talked to and they're having struggles, they're gonna work through that, that. But for exemptions, it's pretty clear where those exemptions have to come from. And it can't just be a parent saying, no, that my kid doesn't.
So I, I'm not talking about that. And so behavioral or other, and I'm a parent of a child who has sensory processing disorder, who if they were kindergarten, first or second grade, keeping a mask on all day would have been difficult and I would have had a physician note and, and a diagnosis to support that. But what I'm asked for is how that immediately outs a child with a medical or behavioral issue? And so are we asking parents of those unique learners to at least try to send their kids with a mask first? And then see how it goes? Or do we know our, our parents trying to do this and have medical exemptions from their physicians already?
So I can, I can answer a couple of those, Aaron. One, we've been clear with our, what our expectations are, right? Pre K through 12, wearing face coverings. Two, we've, I have not received, and I don't know if Kathy has, I have not received one exemption yet or asked for an exemption of wearing a mask. And, and we've been having these conversations for five to six weeks. Certainly, I, I know I have some principals, I think Pete's on, you know, thinking about the elementary levels. You know, Pete, how, how might your staff and you, you all approach those questions that Mr. Williams is asking?
So what we're looking at, we've been speaking with our families of some of our unique learners that this describes. And what we're looking at is working with the students, not in the inclusion classroom first, but in some of the pullout rooms that we utilize to build up the children's stamina and understanding of using the mask. One family that I spoke with yesterday was concerned about that, saying, you know, how long do you think it will take to teach them to wear that mask? Because we're still working on toileting. And it was saying, you know, every child is different, we will continue to work on that. Aaron, 20 points as well. The children do know that there's differences between each other as well. This is one where it's, it's safety for the individual not wearing a mask and for the others in the classroom is paramount. And that's where we're going to work through that to make sure that everyone is being safe and that inclusion opportunities will be happening when we know that the children are able to wear the mask successfully. And as I mentioned, and as Jim mentioned, we've been having these conversations with, with parents over the last few weeks.
Awesome, that's what I was looking for, Pete, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I had one other, one other biggest question, comment for either you, Kathy or Jim. Do we have other policies that address what students are able to wear sort of on clothing generally? And what I'm thinking about is, you know, some people have all sorts of different kind of things on their masks from, you know, Red Sox logos to designs or what have you. But I'm sure somebody's going to get really creative and start having messages on there. And it strikes me that the, the policy, whatever policies we have about clothing would also have to apply to masks. I don't know if we have a policy, but I was gonna suggest if we do, might be worth looking at that and at least including a cross-reference in this policy to say, you know, it must meet standards for appropriate clothing in accordance with policy P B C D.
We didn't talk about that, that's a good point.
Yeah, well. We'll, we'll see if we need to cross-reference that, Mark, that's a, and, and, you know, even if we don't have it for the next meeting and we have you a second reading that, those are typically things we do allow Jim and Karen to put on the, on the footnotes so that don't substantively change. So we'll be able to update that at any point, if, if we do have something to cross-reference, even if it's added later.
Yeah, and if I remember, like, some of those dress code type of things are building-based handbook things and they might apply just already, looking at them. It might say like, nothing with logos, nothing with bad language, nothing with.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think they, they would. I think it's probably a matter of just the extent of this policy is, is drawing attention to a particular issue.
Yeah.
Not a bad idea to let other people remember that those things apply here too.
Yeah, so Mark, I, I could, I could also add to this, you know, something that says the face covering must comply with any applicable policies and things for clothing or messaging or, you know, stuff. I could come up with something that says, hey, this, this also has to conform to any other. Because those things like you said, could be part of the handbook or, you know, some other things that aren't a policy that I can reference. But, but can, can be part of, I can put something broad in there that, that covers, covers all that.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking about, thank you.
Have you guys talked at all? I mean, I know this is beyond sort of the four corners of the policy here, but I'm just wondering if it generated any conversation about, and, and I guess it was reassuring too to hear Jim say that he hasn't really had anybody asking for this yet. But, you know, if you do start having, you know, a number of people who meet the guidelines and don't have to wear a mask, are we making any other accommodations in the room to keep everybody else safe? Because that person might have a really good reason not to wear the mask, but they're still coming in without a mask and that might cause some anxiety for the people around them. So is, is there anything that we can do in those situations do, or that we need to do? Is it, you know, more distancing or, you know, a teacher is less apt to approach a student without a mask? I mean, are there any of those kinds of things that we need to be thinking about?
Jim, I was waiting to see if you wanted to take that.
Sorry, Kathy Sylvie still on?
I mean, I assume we'll also then go not just.
I am on, I just can't figure out how to unmute myself. It's getting late apparently.
All right.
Um, so I, I think it is going to be important that we think about how we can do it in a way that's respectful of the fact that the exemptions would be because of a protected civil rights issue. And so again, I think that thinking about maybe increased distancing, which might not look terribly different from how the rest of the class is still physically distancing, might be one measure of doing that. And I think beyond that, we have to take into account kind of what else we can do. You know, placing a student maybe by the open window of a classroom or, you know, other kind of measures with that. But it, it's a challenge absolutely because it fits, you know, kind of the concern for safety against the concern for protecting, you know, the rights of people who have a disability. And so both values are important to us. We want to respect both values. And so we'll have to be creative with regard to what makes sense. I will say that my conversations with parents who have been concerned about their students' ability to wear a mask and have good reason for that concern invalid, what might be, you know, disability-related concerns, have really talked about, they don't want to make people uncomfortable. If, you know, pondered, should we be doing remote education as a result of this? So, you know, I think parents would be very sensitive and have been very willing to join us in trying to increase a student's tolerance for mask wearing and to get past the, like, let's say the sensory issues that might be accompanying why a student might be resistant. So again, I think there are other options, you know, for a student who might be very much tied to, let's say, a pulmonary issue. Perhaps they could be wearing a shield, which, you know, has a distance between the, the mouth and the nose to where the shield is, which does provide a little bit of extra, you know, P P E protection. So again, I think that there are conversations that we will have to have for each of the unique situations in a way that tries to maintain our values and respect for both sides of the situation.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other questions or concerns about this? This is a first read, so we're not voting on this tonight. We'll have to take it up again the next time. It's just a matter of whether anybody wants to make any amendments or suggestions. And if not, we'll just consider the first read and we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for next time.
Yep, and, and this is on our subcommittee agenda for this coming Monday. And Mark will look to incorporate your feedback and have it ready for next time, so.
Thank you.
Excellent, thanks, Paul. And thank you Kathy and Jim, everyone on the subcommittee for policy.
Yeah, an update on that. So we are going to be meeting regularly again, the, the subcommittee on, on policy, just, just so you know.
Thank you. Okay, so Kathy, do you have any warrant approvals this evening?
Yes, I do. I will, I will read, I will read my, my paragraph. August 13th and August 26th, I Kathleen Bates, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of $270,179.50. This includes general fund expenses of $201,975.62, revolving expenses of $2,687.09, and grant expenses of $65,516.79. Finally, I authorized payroll in the amount of $209,129.28.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, moving on to the minutes of July 29th, 2020. Does anybody have anything there?
I don't.
Do we have a motion to accept those minutes?
A second.
All in favor, Paul?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
An aye for me, that passes, thank you. And then the August 12th, 2020 minutes? Anybody?
It said in the minutes, Aaron Williams was not present for the regular session or the executive session. So I think that's incorrect in the minutes that we should just.
Aaron did.
No, that's correct.
Is that the executive session?
Yeah, Aaron, Aaron was not at that meeting.
Yeah, so I think it got confused in the minutes that she was there, then she wasn't there, but she what? So that just needs to be corrected.
Oh, I see what you're saying. It had her appearing at some point?
Yeah.
I'm magical with that.
Yeah, I could.
If I could split my body in two places at once, it would make serving.
Yeah, so I, I think it's just, you know, she wasn't in executive, except, executive session either. So just removing her from present to be absent.
Right, yeah. Because I think at some point it says she returned, she didn't come back to.
Didn't return after executive.
Right.
Just, she should just be marked as absent, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, that's all.
Catch Kathy.
Yeah, good one.
Aaron, would you like to reflect where you actually were?
All right, do we have a motion to accept those minutes as amended?
To move.
A second.
Thank you, Kathy, all in favor, Paul?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
An aye for me as well, thank you. All right, next up, do we have any gifts and donations this evening?
We do, we have a donation of estimated value of $300 for some equipment to the Ashland Innovation Center, including a circular saw and some batteries, et cetera, and Bluetooth speaker from Mr. Kendall.
Aw, thanks, Mr. Kendall. Do we have a motion to approve that donation?
Moved.
And second, all, all in favor, Mr. Terry? Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kendall, can you vote on that?
I was gonna, Mark, should I abstain, see, it's my gift? Can I accept my own gift?
I have no idea, Paul.
Go for it. Aye for me as well, and that passes, thank you. And committee reports of activities, does anybody have anything they'd like to share?
I do, and I'll let anybody else go first, but I do have something I want to share.
Go right ahead, Paul.
So remember, we have a community forum tomorrow evening for the Mondays building project. Last night, we had, and I think Jim agreed, I think we had one of our best meetings of the building committee. We had a very, very good discussion on the project. As part of that meeting, the goal was to set the overall budget for the project, and which we did. I can share that with you. So the total project budget that we are requesting the tri board to discuss next week is $84,387,000. And so it's, it's in line with what the estimates were at the previous state. And without getting into details, I will just say that what that is, is a not to exceed number. And our goal, and I'm very confident, we should, we should beat that, beat that number. But we had a great, great meeting last night and, and, you know, it was very productive and, and, and we had some great contributions from our, our building leadership and our administration team. So appreciate it, so. And I think that, that's all I wanted to say. So tomorrow night, the community forum, and then we have the, the tri board on Monday.
Monday's the 31st, right, Paul?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? I did get a chance to, with many of you on here, and thank you, Mike, for coordinating it to meet the new staff in person this week. So it was nice to, to see their faces behind the mask and them see me behind my mask. But it was good to, to see the, the new folks that will be joining us and had a little bit of that back-to-school feeling amidst all this other weirdness. So that was, that was nice. Thank you, Mike, for putting that together, looked like it was a success.
Thanks, thanks for joining us, Laurie. It was, it really was, it was the highlight of my week. Well, obviously it was on Tuesday, but it was, it was really great to feel a little energy in the building again. So thank you so much for taking the time to join us.
Sure thing. Anybody else?
Just one final comment, tomorrow, staff is back. Staff is back. We are beginning our professional development days tomorrow. So it's exciting to have. Our faculty and staff back in the buildings and getting reacquainted with, with the facilities. After hiatus since March twelfth. So. Or thereabouts. So it, it'll be exciting to, to get folks back in and. And have some of the educational buzz around that we're so used to this time of year. So. And many of them are on tonight. So thank you for hanging out for two hours.
Jim, speaking of, you usually have the opening day. You know, in the auditorium and some of us have attended and spoke in the past. How are you handling that?
We're not. It, it, it was actually funny. A couple of superintendents said to me. Jeff Marsden from Medfield and Armin Fires from Medway tonight texted me, a lot of us are starting tomorrow. What are you doing for your, you know, words of wisdom? And I said, I'm not. Our staff needs to get in and do their things and feel comfortable and they don't need to hear from me. Nor do they want to.
Yeah, so that, that's probably their silver lining for this, right?
Without question.
My little Jimmy story.
Right.
Yeah, they're, they're probably more excited about listening. So.
Yeah, you're off from that guy.
I, I would say though, because we've had so many Monday night faculty meetings. Throughout the entire, you know, COVID experience, that I think they're pretty up to date on what's going on in, in our world.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Any, any other updates before we move to adjourn? Okay, who wants to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, and all in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Paul? And aye for me. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. And thank you for your input. Thank you for all you do for Ashland. And I hope everything goes smoothly getting back to school. Have a great night and a great week. See you later.